It was nice.
Nice.
We stayed PJs until like 11:00. Fabulous. Might have been a little past eleven.
Welcome to the Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose they are doing so. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Correspondence, Ryan?
We have an email from Ms. Lisa Mackey dated February 5, 2020, regarding class sides at Blueberry Hill School, and we have a letter from Ms. Karen Pelosi dated February 7, 2020, regarding teacher and parent substitute pay rates.
Thank you. There's a motion for the approval of minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 11, 2020, school committee meeting as presented.
Second motion, second. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Do we have any visitor comments? School committee announcements and recognitions? Jana?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Digital Citizenship Coalition meeting on Monday, March 2nd, 8:45 to 9:45 a.m. at Long Meadow Public School Central Office, and they've been doing a fantastic job creating this digital citizenship awareness and efforts, so please plan to attend if you can.
Great, thank you. Kevin?
Just to remind everybody that we're in playoff sports mode, and so girls' and boys' hockey are in the playoffs, and then girls' and boys' basketball as well. Tom, do you have an update on when the basketball games are? I know there was some issue on that.
Friday, six and eight girls and boys.
So we have the doubleheader. Doubleheader Friday night.
Nice.
Is it a single admission or double admission?
Single admission.
Single admission, doubleheader.
One game, twelve games.
Yeah, how can you pass it up? So there we go.
Excellent. And Ryan, did you have one as well?
Yes, the Williams Mo School Variety Show is going on right now, so stop watching us and go there and support the students. There's a great rock band that's gonna be about halfway through. My son's last performance, so that's it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We have some business with guests. First, we have some representatives that attended the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America Conference in Washington, D.C. that we'd love to hear from, if you'd like to conform.
Come on up, and you can strategically position the microphone so that there's one near you, at least. As they're gathering, and you guys can introduce yourselves, I will acknowledge also that Sue Bertrand, our Assistant Superintendent for Learning, joined the gang, and so maybe you would like to provide the context in a wide introduction?
Sure, thanks. These are just a handful of the students that went to the CADCA conference, Prevention Conference, in D.C. The post-coalition grant pays for some folks to go every year, and so we had a pretty big group this year, several adults, health teachers from middle school, and I'm the sector rep for the school, so I was invited to go and went, and these guys kept a good eye on me the whole time we were there, right? Didn't lose me or anything, and we had an amazing time. So this is Jonah Verassi, Kaylee Bone, and Kate Mulcahy, Catherine Mulcahy.
Mulcahy.
Mulcahy. Yes, yeah, and they were amazing young adults, just like, I just, I couldn't get, I can't say enough good things about them, yeah. I think they're gonna have to tell us more about what they saw and start and kind of go out.
Sure, yeah, so basically, we attended a bunch of different, like, talks and seminars. I took a three-class course that basically went through how to analyze your community and figure out how to solve, and then go about proceeding in solving the problem in your community. So they went on this whole program called the Strategic Prevention Framework, which they broke it down, and I won't explain it all because there was a lot. It took three courses to go through the entire thing. But basically, you would assess your community, and they broke that all down, and they went through getting specifically what the problem is, where it is, and who it's happening with, and then figuring out a solution, and then specifically breaking it down on how you need to go about doing that from the very start to the very end, every intricate thing that you need to do. And that was really good, and that is something I can bring to our school with the Stand Club here that I'm in at LA Just, and go about solving different things that I see that need to be solved. Another thing that I thought was really cool was in the morning, when we woke up, there used to be, sometimes there was this huge, there's this huge room that everyone would go into, and they would have a couple talks going on, and this one woman, she was a scientist, had this really cool thing about rehabilitation. So she basically stated, Mrs. Warren has this whole thing about it later, so I'm just gonna touch about it, touch on it.
You can take it.
No, no, no. So basically, it was about how she, so she did this study on rats, and she figured out, well, she went on about how having a problem with a substance is a mental illness as it is. If we were to isolate people with an addiction or something like that, that almost worsens their problem. If we, but to, like, give them social interaction and help them more through that than, like, punishing them, then, you know, there's benefits to that, yeah.
It's Dr. Nora Volko, she's the head of the National Institute for Drug Abuse, and she is amazing, amazing. So I'm so happy that Jonah was impressed by her, too. She's amazing.
All right, so I went to, and there's a lot of, there was a lot of great info and presenters that gave a lot of interesting points, and there's a lot to be learned. But something interesting I found was that some of the presenters at the conference were giving whole sessions and talking about all these things that our middle schoolers here in Long Meadow already know, already been taught in their health classes. For example, like, their sessions would be like, what a vape is, and like, is it safe? Is vaping safe, which it's not? And so, there's a, so what I took away from that was Long Meadow is, you know, more advanced than a lot of the country in educating their youth, and I thought that our health teachers and everyone's doing a great job, you know, educating, and we should keep it up.
All right.
So, yeah.
Good to hear. Thank you.
So my name is Kaylee, as said. So I went last year as a freshman, and I also went this year, and going for a second time had an advantage because, like, I knew where I was and I knew what we were doing, but also, like, had a disadvantage, like Catherine said, I already knew a lot of what the sessions were putting out, so it was a little bit more difficult to find sessions where they were teaching me something new. So I went to one session with Ms. Warren and Jonah about how, sorry, so I went to one session where it talked about how Oregon, Colorado, and Washington State legalized marijuana, and then their illicit drug use went up, like, rapidly, and Oregon is number one in marijuana and number one in illicit drug use. And as we all know, Massachusetts legalized marijuana in 2017, and as a student, I don't see any illicit drug use, like, at all among my peers, but I soon learned that it's a growing problem in areas that have legalized marijuana. In ninth-grade health class, we watched a video on the use of heroin, and I noticed a lot of students thought that it was unnecessary to watch because we don't really see heroin use or cocaine use, like, in our community, so I hope that the Health Department continues to educate on the possible rising illicit drug use, and obviously, continue to educate about marijuana, because I think that they go almost hand in hand, so it's important to educate on both.
So I can kind of fill in a little bit. So I'm Shelley Warren, I'm the Substance Use Response Coordinator for the district, and I'm also a chair of the board for CLOSE, which sponsored, you know, the trip for the students and the other staff. And it was interesting, because as the stats come in on states that are kind of a few years ahead of us with legalization, they're sharing what they were seeing, and they, you know, one thing that kind of came up nationally is there's like a 15% rise in youth marijuana use, and that's exactly corresponds with what we've seen since 2017 with our data, too. So it's also, it's good to put us in a national context when we go to a conference like this. But overall, like what Catherine said, it felt like we were ahead of the curve in many areas, which was also, you know, really good to see. But there was one striking statistic related to the illicit drug use in Oregon and Washington and Colorado. There was a study that came out which showed a few years back that overdose rates went down in places that legalized marijuana, and what they made a big deal in many places, I think in some of the sessions you were in, too, of citing a new study that has come out since then, which showed that after that study was published, then the overdose rates went up, and illicit other drug use went up as well. So they were saying that first study was kind of like a false, you know, a false hope pinned on the legalization for, as a solution for the opiate crisis. So that was kind of interesting to see, that that isn't what was panning out in the long run in those states. I, too, I thought Nora Volko was my, you know, favorite moment probably, because she really emphasized the importance of connection as a solution and a form of prevention as well for substance use, but also for mental illness, and she had the studies with, you know, all the graphs and charts to show that and how that works in the brain, and, you know, if a rat is given the choice of choosing social interaction over the drug, it will choose the social interaction. And the only time that that shifted was if the social interaction was punished. So there were just a lot of policy implications that came out of that. Paul McNeil and I attended a couple sessions, and I think Sue attended one as well, on restorative practices, and it was interesting, there were two communities that I visited with their sessions, where they looked at, like, how they were finding creative solutions, partnering with law enforcement in their community, providers, the schools, all kind of getting together to find creative ways to respond when students are found to be using substances, kind of going outside of, like, the suspension mode and more towards getting at what the underlying cause is, and looking at, you know, creative ways to address those needs. So, and there were some, you know, pretty moving stories that came out of those workshops for me, but like, one takeaway, and I did bring some of those, which I can share later if you're interested, but one thing that they highlighted was that what matters more is ways to connect somebody to the community, you know, as we mentioned, that's like the most important thing, as opposed to isolating and pushing out, but that, like, smaller consequences enforced consistently is way more productive than, like, huge consequences intermittently enforced. So that seemed to be like a big takeaway. So it's better to have, like, not so much the big stick, but a bunch of small carrots, if you will, and, you know, that that's a better policy moving forward. So, anyway, there were some great creative things. There was one community that has a partnership with the Police Department where, when the police find students in possession, they have a third option instead of, like, either dumping things out and calling the parents, or, like, filing for a minor in possession. The community came together and created a third option, which is an educational citation, and they can give the, you know, the minor the option to basically complete three hours of educational counseling in lieu of having any kind of court involvement at all, and the police don't have to get involved, it doesn't involve the courts at all, it's just between the Police Department, counselors at the school, and a local service provider that they do that. And they found in that community, they had zero minor in possession charges over, like, a two- or three-year period, but not because youth weren't drinking, it's because the police weren't, you know, enforcing it at all. So they went from having that to having, like, 22 in the first year, that all, 100% of them went to the Educational Citation Program. So those were 22 youth who would have had no intervention at all, who ended up being, like, shunted towards services as a result of it. So that was just one of the solutions that...
That was my favorite session. I think that was South Portland, right?
That was Skagit County, Washington. South Portland also had a different one as well, a similar program.
It speaks to the isolation versus, like, you know, I think we were talking about it yesterday morning in one of our meetings about, like, you know, vaping is on the rise. So there's really good statistics out there about things. Cigarette smoking is way down, but vaping is way up. Cocaine use is kind of rising up again, and so, like, things to just be thinking about and be prepared about, but really, to, you know, take vapes away and wherever, it's not helping, you know, they'll go out and get more. These kids are really addicted to nicotine, they're highly addictive, and it's not something that they can stop without help, so it's really important for us to remember.
Yeah, and in those areas, I actually feel like the national stats are behind what we get for local stats, because they, it takes them longer to implement a national survey, so we get our local data, like, a year or two ahead of what the government is seeing for their data, so, but it was interesting, they said the year, it was the single highest jump in a substance use ever in 45 years of surveying was youth vape use in 2017, and then it was followed up the very next year. The second highest increase ever was use of dab pens for marijuana. So they were saying, like, that delivery system, because it's the same delivery system but two different substances, it's like one has become, you know, a gateway for using the other in youth, and that's what they're, you know, they're seeing. So we'll have to see what the vaping health crisis does to those numbers, so, I don't know. But anyway, it was a great opportunity, we had a blast. And as a little side note, we had the opportunity to, they visited with Senator Markey and were able to meet with him and express, like, what they were seeing, you know, with him. We had a tour of the White House while we were there, and then two of us, myself being one of them, got to go for the impeachment proceedings. So we had two tickets from our senator's office for that, so we were actually, me and a student who couldn't be here tonight, were there for the vote, the acquittal vote, and it was just, you know, watching a pretty momentous historic occasion and seeing the whole government in action with the Chief Justice and all of the senators on the floor, and the decorum around it, and the seriousness, and it was something that neither of us will ever forget, for sure, so.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Oh, no, you go. You guys first. Okay. So, thank you all for coming. It's great information. You know, one of the things we do and we're doing right now is planning the budget and how we're gonna spend money, and we make policy decisions for the school district. So you already mentioned how you were taught how to analyze an issue and then come to a proposed solution, so really, I would look forward to you guys taking this and actually using it and coming to us and saying, this is a problem that we as a student body recognize or within, and working with the staff, and this is what we think you should consider doing about it, whether it's a staffing thing or a policy thing. Bring us the information that you guys can figure out with what you learned, and that will help us make the decisions, you know, based on that, to help the district and obviously the community as a whole. So I think it's great what you did, but there's always a question I always have working with students is, now what are you gonna do about it? So you learned something, okay, now what are you gonna do about it? And bring it back to us so that we can help you. So, thank you, again.
Was this made available to all the students? How did you, all three of you get involved in this? Were you in a group that you made this available, or?
Yeah, I can answer, I mean, I can answer that. There, these are all the students who we brought are all active members of a club called STAND, which is Students Together Against Negative Decisions.
Yeah, what you wanna say, okay.
Yeah, so we opened it up to anybody in that club, because that club partners with CLOSE's community on prevention efforts, so, you know, they, for example, had a booth at Long Meadow Days last year where they were, you know, doing goggle activities, impaired driving goggle activities. We've done, last year we did vaping lessons in the sixth grade classes, we do awareness campaigns, they're already involved in prevention work in the school. So we opened it up to anybody in the club to apply, to be able to go, and then we took as many as we could, actually, we took one more than we planned to take, but only one more applied, so we're like, all right, we'll make it happen, to bring seven, as opposed to trying to say no to one person, so, anyway, it was good.
And the club, the STAND Club has, you know, freshmen as well as sophomores, runs the gamut, so it isn't just one, you know, upperclassman or lowerclassman.
And it's actually growing, like, last year, there was around ten, I'd say, at most, at a meeting. Normally, a lot of people signed up, but then it comes to all the meetings, and that was kind of the problem, but this year, attendance has been great. We have, like, 15 people, I'd say, in meeting, which is, which is really good for us, and seniors to freshmen, it's good.
Now, is it you three that are running the STAND meetings, or is it?
Jonah.
I am, and then there's...
Had a finger, Jonah's daughter, right?
And then there's three other officers. There's Madison Copeland, Katie McMahon, and Lily Tap. They're all seniors.
Got it.
Madison and Lily came with us, and then we had a junior who came with us as well, Owen, and another sophomore, Owen, so.
Yep.
We just so happened to not have freshmen this year who applied, but it would have been open to any freshman members as well.
Yeah, we all went as freshmen last year.
And this year, the club did a whole, like, six-week campaign on vaping awareness during the vaping health crisis, where they published the stats, you know, the death toll, really, as it was happening, and they highlighted one different fact each week and tried to, like, pepper the school with it for one to two weeks at a time, so. And you can see that bulletin board in the hallway down with the remnants of it, but...
So, yeah. Suzy?
Yes, and thank you so much, because your leadership in this is really critical for helping more students make positive choices versus negative decisions. One of the things that stood out to me was something you said, and the data around, our middle school students are learning, you know, are way ahead in terms of, because of the programs we have in place. One piece of data that has stuck out for me that Mr. McNeil presented, it was the middle of the summer, I think, was that, yes, our students are delaying, you know, getting involved with substances, but when they do get involved in high school age, they're getting involved pretty heavily. And so, as far as, like, if there's a problem to kind of look into and sort of figure out, I think that would be one that I would like to, I would love to know more about, how we could, you know, what could be done to sort of, number one, figure out why that's happening, and number two, what are some solutions around that? I know STAND is probably one of the interventions that you're probably, you know, working on, but I'm just interested to see, like, how we can, because it's great that, you know, they're putting it off for so long, but how can we put it off even longer? You know, and mitigate some of that heavy substance use that we're seeing in the data. So that's my charge to you, but thank you so much for your leadership, and this is such a big topic and so important to the youth of our town, so thank you.
Jana?
I just wanted to say thank you as well, just, it takes a lot of smarts, intelligence, and those are the same words, but, you know, just having the courage to go down there and attend these sessions and then bring it back to us, but, and just the dedication to your peers and to the community, it's a lot, and it's appreciated, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So my quick question, if you, if there was one takeaway for the students, if there's one takeaway that you had in terms of the prevention and intervention activity that you think we could introduce here in Long Meadow, was there something that you learned about? Is there something you saw? Is there some strategy that was intriguing to you? Is there some approach to prevention or intervention that was intriguing to you that you think might make sense for us here in Long Meadow? We've talked about a few, but is there anything else? Any other big takeaways, like, big lightbulb moments for you guys?
Who went to the breakout, where they did the video, remember? The marketing video, like, they targeted...
That was Lily and Madison.
That was Lily and Madison. They're not here, but maybe I'll speak to Lily and Madison then. We all went to a session on marketing, and so, for Salma, Alabama, I think it was, and they took their results from their surveys, and they targeted a specific area, and theirs was marijuana use, right? And they targeted it, and they got all community members involved who were involved in that and made a video, and specifically targeted in the video, you know, students who are more typical users, so it's kind of like how to identify an area, and then how to market, you know, prevention to that, those specific students, so I know they really liked that one, maybe they went that one together.
So, to add on to the strategic prevention framework thing that I talked before, one thing that I kind of saw a little bit, from bits and pieces throughout, was we need to, so, we are just a club, like, STAND is just a club in the high school, trying, doing their best to just, you know, help out high schoolers, and something, we need more support, we need more people to join the club, we need more people, and something that other groups and some things that, that they advise us to do is, like, go to businesses in town, those that promote drugs and substance abuse, but I feel, even if, like, we have the shops, which are very popular in Long Meadow that a lot of kids go to, if we could do something, like, with them there, the things that they go to, things that they look up to, they think about a lot, there was, like, bits and pieces that hinted towards that, that I think would be very helpful here.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add, I appreciate all of you guys taking the time to be in that club. When does it meet? Just so everyone knows.
Every other Tuesdays.
Okay, that's good to know, and I think it's also important, Jonah said he's gonna take the information and also all the other students that went and bring it back to the group that you guys meet with and maybe come up with some ideas, and it's great that it may have only grown, like, five, but that's actually a lot in one year, so I think that's great, and I'm sure it'll keep growing, especially with more awareness, so we're looking forward to hearing more about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy, well done. Good night.
So I just wanted to let the committee know, make sure everyone's okay, if we move the MIAA discussion with Mr. Landers up, because he has a commitment he needs to get to after this. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great.
So as Tom is making his way up, I provided you with a number of documents relating to a postseason tournament proposal that is on track with the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. There is a slide deck that the MIAA has used to educate the public on the tournament proposal. There is a fact sheet that offers what a yes vote in favor of the proposal means, what a no vote in favor of the proposal means. The quickest explanation I could provide is that the MIAA's Tournament Management Committee is proposing statewide athletic tournaments in all high school sports, and so the effect would be that they would create 75-team divisions in each sport, they would put 75, place 75 schools in each division based on school size, and the top 32 teams in each of those divisions would be eligible for a statewide postseason tournament, and so the, this matter has come washed upon us fairly quickly, and I think it was something that at least a couple members of the committee thought would make sense to talk about here tonight. It has implications for this community, it has implications for our student athletes, and Mr. Landers is, this is ultimately his vote on Friday, February 28th, at a special assembly of the MIAA, so he's here to sort of answer any questions you might have, give you an opportunity to express any concerns you have that he in turn, I suppose, could represent at the state level. So we could start with your questions, or we could start with the first... So we could start with your questions, or we could start with a further explanation of the proposal, if necessary, whatever works for you.
Mr. Landers, do you have a preference?
There are several parts to it. So I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm also happy to, to kind of lay out the origin of it, my position as I see it, and some interesting anecdotes.
I think that would be helpful.
If I do. But, you know. I think it, it gets very technical.
It does. It does.
And, and I think we, I would benefit from, you know, I, I used to work at an athletic conference, so it's, that's, it's not that I don't understand it. It's just, let's have a summary for the public, maybe?
Sure.
Just a, you know, kind of a, like, brass tacks, what does it all mean?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back. As with anything, there's complexity to the proposal. I acknowledge that the Tournament Management Committee and the people on it, the twenty individuals or so work hard. And there are people who are administrators and, and prints, athletic directors and representatives of MIA. And I don't want to, I don't want to not acknowledge that hard work. I also want to acknowledge that there are different sides to this. Mr. Capitasto and I don't necessarily agree on all aspects of this. He has helped me to understand quite a bit, but, and, and the more you learn, the more complicated it is, like anything else. I want to point out one thing, I'm going to come back to it, that the, the slideshow that the superintendent is putting up, I want you to notice that the date is two, three, twenty. And I want, just acknowledge that we're sitting here on two, twenty-five. So, about twenty-one days ago or so, because this didn't come out on two, three. This was published on two, four. And I think that's one of my, my biggest problems with it that I'll go into. Here's the origin. Well-intentioned people throughout the state, but I, it is my view, and, and that it is more of an eastern mass issue, because eastern mass has more people, more schools, think that there's unfairness in the current system. Two things I would say, that they seek to equalize the number of playoff games that teams in central mass and eastern, and western mass have to play before you get to the semifinals relative to eastern mass. For a quick example, field hockey here, or boys hockey here, there are four teams that made the playoffs. So you'll play two games and then you'll hit the state semis. And in the eastern part of the state, oftentimes, you'll have to play three or four games. The other aspect that they want to resolve is to redefine divisions and bring them in line, no matter if you're in the western part of the state, central or east, into similar-sized schools. So I acknowledge that there are some valid points with that. I also want to acknowledge that no matter what happens, we learned on the same day that this came out on two, four, that if this fails, they're not going to retain the current system. So if this vote is successful, we have a statewide tournament. They formally published the fact that the TMC, which did not even have to bring this to a vote, has had a vote that if this fails, they're going to combine central and western mass tournaments anyway. You may or may not know, but we have some, we already have some sports that were combined, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls outdoor track, boys and girls swimming. For example, already have a central mass, western mass tournament. That will all be the case. All sports will be the case of a central, western mass if this doesn't pass. That came out on two, four, about twenty, twenty-one days ago. I didn't appreciate that as a principle. I would consider that coercion. My position on this is that I'm going to vote no on Friday. And again, there's lots to consider. I want to acknowledge that we've been told that no matter what happens beginning next year, max preps is a team ranking system that's going to be used. It's used nationally. It's used in a lot of states. But it would replace, in this area, the Walker system and some other systems that we've used to rank teams and, and try to set up parity in, in competition. My main problem with this from the MIA is I think that they've done a very poor job of rolling this out. I think that they've done a very poor job, a minimal job, of communicating this. To be fair, the MIA has numerous committees. The MIA has been talking with athletic directors for almost a year. To be fair, they talk about a lot of things at the MIA. They, sometimes they talk about it for a year, or two, or three. But they never communicated with building principals, and we are the ones who have the vote, until December seventeenth. And the email that I got, I had to go and look at it. I got, I counted up, I think I got twenty-one emails from the MIA in December eighteen, so in January. I just got a pretty basic, you know, notes from the December eleventh meeting. I had to go back. My athletic director filled me in on this, December seventeenth, a few days before winter break. I had to go back and dig into, I think it was item six of eight or nine, very underplaying, I think, a really important decision. So I think that they haven't done this. I would, I would liken it to the, the vetting and the discussion and the debating, pro and con, that they've done with the athletic directors. I would look at that as maybe a phase one, and a phase two is a rollout of an education, full-court press, and, and layout, layout things. Because I do, in addition to their, their poor communication, I think that with the max, max prep effect, already it's going to encourage teams to travel more. You're going to be encouraged to travel further because you're, you're going to be, you're going to receive more points by playing more advanced teams. I think that with the state tournament, that will be exacerbated. I think that'll cause a few things. I think it'll cause less student attendance at those games, those first level games. I think it will cause more travel. I think it will cause more student time on buses, which in some cases, considering eastern mass traffic, will consider, will, will require some early dismissals from school. I think it will have an effect on our transportation budget. And I think that Massachusetts is unique in its regional history. In Massachusetts, western mass titles matter. I completely understand that other states have different state tournaments. Massachusetts is unique in the sense of our, our geographic reality of the history, et cetera. So for several reasons, I plan to vote no. I, I will say that Mr. Capitasto and I, we, we had to do a lot of this digging ourselves over the last few weeks. And in so, some of our teams will do okay in the state tournament. There's just so many unknowns. Long Meadow is a competitive town and a competitive athletically. And for some of our teams, they travel a lot already. If you're a part of the, of girls lacrosse team, the boys lacrosse team, the field hockey team, that's a reality that you're used to. But not all of our teams are that dominant. And I think that it's going to change the paradigm. As I said, I don't think that there was a, an effective or an acceptable phase two. A couple of interesting anecdotes. This was released on February fourth this month. The vote is Friday. The only Q and A session that they did, they did three in, in the other parts of the state on February tenth. They did one in western mass last night at Chicagoe Cup. Not much time to consider and do your homework and do some research. I mentioned before the, the fact that the option B, if it doesn't pass, was also formally announced and rolled out on February fourth. There was some discussion of that, but that particular plan was rolled out and announced to principals. And I want to say that the, other than the December seventeenth email, that was not titled, you know, major change in tournaments, that December fourth email, and at the same time, there was a MIA state meeting with a lot of ADs, as well as their updates on their, on their website, that all came out on, on, on February fourth. As we sit here tonight, superintendent said that there are going to be four divisions and that they'll try to put different teams into each division, seventy-five in most cases. But as we sit here tonight, there are still more questions than answers. So for example, they're not ready for, they're not ready for this vote, I would argue. There is no proposed alignment for the, any of the individual sports tonight. There is no proposal for that. There's no proposal for what division, wrestling, LHS, and every other high school, wrestling, indoor track, outdoor track, cross-country skiing, golf, as we speak tonight. There's also no.
The individual sports.
Individual sports. The only team sports that doesn't have an alignment proposal is football as well. Other than football, the teams, the team alignments are, are there. So.
So that when you, I'm sorry, when you say team alignment, do you mean there's already a number of teams that Long Meadow has been grouped with?
We have been grouped with, as we sit right now, for all of the team sports, other than football, we will be deemed division two. We are, we are all over the place in terms of our division. And I don't want to.
Currently.
But we have division one, division two.
And from a transportation perspective, I'm just interested, what, from a transportation, where's our, where's the furthest away that we would be traveling?
We don't know that. We will build schedules based on quality of the, the team, competitiveness of the team. We'll build those schedules based on.
Oh, so we still don't know who the teams are, that we'd be, we, we just know we'd be in division two?
Yeah, we would, we would be in division two.
We don't know who else is in division two.
If we made the playoffs, we'd play in the division two playoff. We do know the teams that are in division two, but we don't know the individual schedules. There are seventy-five teams.
Right.
And they're going to be ranked in, in max preps. And like I said, there, there is a, there is a motivational factor to, to play more highly-ranked teams, because that win or lose, you'll get more points.
Right.
And some of those teams are local and some, some are not local.
To clarify, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure we understand the question. The, during the regular season.
During the regular season.
You would still play your, within your region, you wouldn't necessarily play a statewide schedule during the regular season, unless you needed to perhaps to gain max prep points. We don't, we don't know that yet. But during the regular season.
In the regular season, you stay within your region.
You'd still be playing your local, regional rivals.
Can I?
It sounds like that's not.
Because if you, if you win all your, you only stay in your region, win all your games, and you're the thirty-third ranked team, you don't make the tournament?
So the top thirty-two teams will make the tournament, plus any team that reaches five hundred. Plus half their games, plus those. Right.
And then it's like playing to get into the tournament.
Yeah, I didn't really get a clear sense that we'd still be solely regional for, for regular season.
I would, I would agree with what Kevin said. That's a big maybe.
I, I didn't get the sense.
And, and again, we travel on certain teams. We're very competitive. But I think there's a built-in motivating factor to play other teams. And if they're local, they're local. I mean, there are teams that we already avoid playing locally in some of the, some of the sports that we play. There are, our girls lacrosse, our boys lacrosse team doesn't play everyone locally, because it's not fun for either team. And it doesn't allow either team to grow. But I think that's going to be exacerbated and you're going to have, that's going to be spread out across all of our teams. And again, I don't want to pretend that it's, you know, all gloom and doom. I think that there was, there are a lot of good concepts to discuss, but I, I think there are more questions than answers. I have to do what I think is right for LHS, all of our student athletes and all of our teams. That's where I stand as of right now. And I'm happy to give you an update. I'm sure it'll be on the news Friday night, the outcome of the vote.
I didn't read anything about that western mass, central mass thing, the Plan B that you get automatically. So I can say two questions. One, if you could explain that.
Sure.
And two, how can the MIA change the playoff format with no vote and yet be seeking a vote for changing the playoff?
Great question. So the Tournament Management Committee didn't have to come to the member schools for any vote. They could have done this themselves.
Oh, neither of that.
They're, they're the regulating body regarding playoffs.
Okay.
They made that second decision about central, western mass. There was some robust debate. And I think there was some, you know, people arguing that they shouldn't just make the decision. But they realized that it was a, a hot-button topic and wanted to go to the member schools.
So what's going to happen? What does it mean to have that tournament, the western mass, central mass? I don't, I don't get the structure.
So, so right now, in boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls swimming, they have, we already play for, for a title. And if Long Meadow wins that championship in those particular sports, you're both western mass champ and central mass champ. You, you can have a western mass team that's western mass champ and central mass champ and central. And that's already happened in, in those few examples. That's happened because population of western mass has gone down. I mean, their, their population of Massachusetts has gone down, the population of western mass, particularly the Berkshires, has gone down. So, so they've made those moves over the last several years, some three years ago, some five years ago, depending on the sport. But that happens. They are going to do that with all of the, all of the sports if this fails on Friday.
To what end? That won't happen, certainly. You know, like, obviously, I look at everything through the lens of soccer. So our second game was always against central, a central mass winner. And then we would go on to the state title. So western mass is already playing in central mass in soccer. That's now a trophy? And then you go to the state title game?
Right. Well.
Or do you win that, and then there's three other games in the state tournament, or?
The argument for this, and I want to be upfront, because one of the, one of the examples that Mike Capitasto helped me to see some data on is this year, we had a very good soccer team. We've had a very good boys soccer team over the last couple of years. He made the, the argument that theoretically, you could have had, I don't think this is indicative of, of the majority of teams we have, but you could have had two western mass teams playing for the state title. You could have had Ludlow and Long Meadow playing for the state title. You could also have two eastern mass teams in another year and another sports play for that. It's trying to get rid of the regionalization of, I'm going to win this region and then move on to, to a final duel, if you will, that they're just going to say, it doesn't matter if the best teams come from the east. If that's the way it is, that's the way it is. If it comes from the west or the central, that's the way it is. So that's really the thought. And, and again, their, their purpose was, I'd go back to the first two things that I mentioned. There are more people in the east. There are more teams in the east. And they do, based on the fact that X amount of teams make a playoff, even under the current system, and if you reach five hundred, you make a playoff, you're going to get more teams that make that. I understand that. At the end of the day, when I add up everything else, I'm, I think that the western mass current structure has value. I'll speak to that on Friday. I, I hope that their option B is not a done deal. To be fair, that they say that it is, that they voted on it, and it is.
So ultimately, Tom's vote, and I support it, and I would vote the same way, frankly. But just to give you the full debate here, when the Tournament Management Committee, when they're, when they're on their roadshow explaining this, these are the boxes that they say that they're checking. You know, that, that it creates a more equitable path to a state championship. Their feeling would be that western mass had, some would say, an easier path to a state championship, because there were fewer playoff games, potentially, depending on the sport.
Absolutely. And depending on the year.
Depending on the year.
We're going to, there are four teams that are going to start the playoffs on Thursday night for hockey. There could be six or eight teams, depending on their schedule. If you had more, there was an imbalance. If you had eight teams, six teams or eight teams reach five hundred, whether they were the top four or not, there would be eight teams in that playoff. There are not this year. And that happens more often in western mass. Absolutely.
The other box that they say they're checking here is that, that when a team gets into a state semifinal or a state final, you're playing a like-sized school. Right now, you know, you, some would say that the, there have been cases where a school like Long Meadow has found its way to a state semifinal or a state final against a much larger school. And that has occasionally happened. So this would have, this proposal would make that not happen.
Correct. It would, right. It would align schools more.
And except all that, I still think Tom is a hundred percent on the money with his assessment of this.
For example, our boys soccer team would have played the division, for the division two state title. They won the division one state title. You can ask to go out.
Two years ago, we played against Brockton.
Correct.
In the, in the, in the state final.
The biggest high school west of the Mississippi, forty-six hundred students. Absolutely. We were beating them in the first half, though.
I won a state title in nineteen eighty-seven, and I don't care about the state title. Are we making it more important than it really is? I mean, it's school, right? I mean, buses, all the trips across the state, like, what? There's nothing after it. We won, and then I was like, see you at school tomorrow. Because it's, there's nothing else. It's not like this ranking matters. You don't go on to play other parts of the country. I just, I think we're making a, they, they, not we, but the MIA is making a huge deal of, let's make sure we have the best state tournament. Why? Why? I just, I agree with you. I just don't think the benefits, the benefit of it is like this massive view of making this amazing athletic tournament, it just doesn't matter that much. Winning Western Mass was pretty cool, too.
Kevin?
It matters to people in Western Mass, and the Central title matters to people in Central Mass. I agree.
And I get it from a, from a, from a competitive standpoint, there's more good teams out there, because there's more people. Yeah, well, it's just not that important.
So I, I have a lot that I want to say, I'll try and rein myself in. I, is there any chance that we can vote, you can push to delay this vote? I mean, I, the thing that I don't understand, I don't understand a lot of things about this, but one of them is the speed. I don't understand why this has to happen so quickly.
Right.
So I would urge, and I'm, I'm glad that Marty wrote a letter that will get sent to the MIAA, but i- is there any hope of saying, like, there is no rush? Can we please delay this to actually figure out what the consequences of this will be? I mean, to me, the way that I look at it is, so one of the things we talk about a lot at Smith is that all teaching is improvable. I believe that with every fiber of my being. I completely believe that all-state tournaments are improvable, but I don't understand why we have to make massive changes with essentially no input to a tournament that probably needs to be tweaked for the reasons you mentioned, but there's no reason why we should eliminate regional tournaments. The easy solution to this is you need more regions in Eastern Mass. Make more regions in Eastern Mass. Then they have fewer teams that have to play in the tournament, and you modify the state tournament, everybody plays the same number. But the thing that really bothers me the most, I mean, I'm, I'm bothered by the bus ain't, I'm bothered by kids having to leave class, but I'm also bothered by what's going to happen when we don't have Western Mass champions. If you talk to kids in the high school, that means so much to them, right? I mean, Ryan just mentioned that. When my son was in the high school, the kids talked about that all the time. To them, the state tournament was gravy. They wanted to win Western Mass more than anything, and then it was like, cool, we get this kind of bonus field trip to go and play these other things. And again, they wanted to win the States, but it was all about Western Mass. It was all about, you're in track, and you want to hit those Western Mass times so you can go to the Western Mass tournament. We're going to lose all that, and I don't understand why. I don't see a compelling reason why we need to lose something that's a big part of our community, and is a big part of our student athletes and their motivation because of, I mean, I agree with Ryan, because of something that really doesn't matter. And losing the regionalization of our sports, that's not going to be positive. I just don't see how that's going to be positive. And so I don't, I don't know how we can make this more clear to the MIAA. I'm frustrated, the timing of this stinks, and I'm really frustrated that we're having this discussion three days before this vote. I, I just don't know what to do about this, because it's being treated like it's not an important issue so we can make a really quick decision, when it's a very important issue, and I just, I don't understand. So anyway, I, I probably, I should rein myself in. I unders, I know you understand my points, but there should be a way to stop this vote so that we can have more time and come up with better solutions than just two bad options.
I, I will say that the, the vote is not a done deal. I think that over the last week, there's been some Eastern schools, specifically Catholic schools, who are nervous about their ranking because of their population, that they're going to be forced up into divisions that are higher. There are some Western Mass schools and athletic directors and/or principals who may vote for this. To be fair, I, I do think that generally, the votes against this will come from Western Mass, Central Mass, you're going to have some support in Central Mass, but you will have some dissension in Eastern Mass as well. But I agree with you, Kevin. I, I think that, I think that the MIAA has discussed and rolled out smaller items more cautiously and more slowly over the years, and considering, you know, like I said, that December seventeenth email to principals was the first one, and it was buried, when I say that. And nothing in January, and then on, on February fourth, to receive this, and, you know, I, I agree, I think that the timing, that's, that's what I will speak to. I think there'll be, I think there'll be a lot of people speaking that day. And, but yeah, I agree.
Suzie? I was, I think he answered my question. I was just, I wanted to get a sense of, you know, who you knew was also of the same mindset, you know, your colleagues in the area, as far as principals.
About seven principals are driving down together on Friday. I, I think that the majority of the PVIAC schools and Western Mass schools will, will, will vote against it.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting. I, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see, you know, what, what Western Mass schools may go for. There, there probably will be two or three that I would guess.
Be okay with it, but-
Sure.
Well, I'm in support of your position, easily.
So in answer to your question, Kevin, I, you know, certainly the, the draft, the correspondence in front of you is something that we can, if it's, if it meets with your approval, or if there's anything you want to add, you could authorize Bronwyn to sign it on behalf of the committee, and we could send it to the MIA. You could also send it to your, to your own association, to the Mass Association of School Committees, to see if, if there's any eleventh-hour response from them on this. When I spoke to the, I emailed rather, the executive director of the Superintendent's Association, I said, what's the reaction across the state? And he said, it's been muted, was his word, was the phrase.
Because nobody knows about it.
Perhaps, perhaps, yeah, or, or, you know, perhaps it's playing out differently here in Western Mass, you know? But it could be that the awareness just is not there, and, and perhaps the awareness hasn't made its way to school committees and that kind of thing, and respecting the fact that ultimately, the MIAA is a, it's a high school membership-driven organization, and the high school principal has the final decision on the, on the vote. But it is a, a matter of importance to the wider community, I, I agree with you. So the letter is here for your consideration. I was, based on this conversation and a conversation I had with Kevin yesterday, I could add to this, if you wanted, a, a phrase to the, that captures your concern about the limited public review period. So, you know, if you, if you wanted to authorize that amendment, and then authorize Chairman Ray or Ms. Monahan to sign the, the letter, you can do that.
Gus, that's one question. This power ranking system, you seem to have a, like, a feel for what, is it, it's all just strength of schedule and wins and losses, or like-
It's still- Yeah, I don't, athletic directors who know a lot more than I do can't tell you exactly how the algorithm is going to work. But strength of schedule, and you're going to, you create your schedules at the beginning of the season. Max prep is updated every three, four, or five days, so it'll affect, you know, the next season, the next schedule, but there's some independent games.
Yeah.
That first season would be, would be interesting, because how are they going to come up with that ranking in that, in that, for that first year? It is used in a lot of states. It's used in some other New England states, Florida, Texas, I mean, there, but it's, that's, there's a lot of newness, not only the tournament, but the, the ranking, et cetera.
Is there, is there Alabama football aspect, like, if I win twelve-nothing in a soccer game, that's good for me?
Yes.
That's great.
That's just-
Seriously? In high schools, like, once kids are like seventeen, eighteen, I'm a big fan of not caring about how many goals I score, but high school sports isn't like that. That's not what it's for.
It's for promoting running up scores, in theory, because if I run up a score, I'm probably going to get a higher ranking.
And I don't want to pretend that I'm an expert on max preps.
They haven't, it's, it's a black box, and it's proprietary, and they, they would say that, that doesn't do that.
So you draw your own conclusion, but-
So can you, you said one thing that just was interesting. So, so the men's soccer team this year would be in Division Two in the current scenario? You have the option to pick which division you're in?
You always can challenge up.
Yep.
You, you can al, if you're a D-three team, you can always go up to D-two or D-one, you can't go down. You have to, you have to go through a formal process. But we are, we are designated to be D-two for all of the teams that have so far been, that's the proposal.
Because of the school size.
We could, we could say, we'd like to be D-one, and, and we hope that that would be granted. Sometimes they, if too many teams ask for that, I think they'd have a decision to make, but, and you, you keep that for at least four years, and then you can review and see how you did.
Can you wave by sport, or is it by the whole school?
No, it's by sport. It's by sport, absolutely.
But, but it is definitely true, Jamie, that a couple of years ago, Ludlow and Long Meadow were the top two soccer teams in the state.
Yeah.
And they played in the Western Mass final.
And Ludlow probably is D-two, too.
And that was the best, the best game of the year.
Yeah, they're smaller.
And then Ludlow won the state, right? And so I don't remember any Long Meadow kids crying that they didn't get to play that game in the state final. They played in the Western Mass final, and they recognized that they lost to the best team in the state, and then Ludlow went on to win. And this year, it was the opposite, so, yeah.
I just have a quick question about the, so the regular season games, if you're Division Two, and let's say it's one of the sports that is either maybe really good or not very good, if there's not a lot of teams in this area that are Division Two for that sport, then we would have to travel to find teams kind of on the same playing fields?
I think you're, you're, you'd have some choice. I do think that many schools in this region will be like-sized, so I don't, I still think that, I don't want to pretend that none of our schedule is going to be local.
Oh, no.
But I do think that depending on the desire of the coach and that athletic director and that school and that town to be competitive, I, there's a built-in, you know-
If you don't do it, it's going to hurt you in the end.
Well, you get more points if you, if you, you could get more points, and you can get this in, in some of the current systems, you can get more points if you play a team and lose than if you beat a team lower than you.
Right.
Strength of schedule is something that is taken into consideration.
Because again, Tom, you can play Division One teams if you're in Division Two.
All the time.
You can play Division Three teams if you're in Division Two.
Happens here all the time.
Right, exactly. So it's not like you're locked into the division you're in, it's just you're going to get more points if you beat a Division One team than if you beat a Division Three team.
Right.
Right, but the Division One team would have to be willing to risk losing to a Division Two team.
Absolutely.
Which is not to their benefit.
So you, yeah, you might not, you might have trouble making a schedule.
It doesn't benefit a D-one team to play a D-two or D-two to play a D-three. Correct.
That's the problem.
Right.
Those lots of problems. That's one of the problems.
That's a big problem. That's a big problem.
I just had some thoughts about the letter, I don't, I don't know.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, can I, I mean, the only, the, you know, if they try to, it sounds like they're really pushing this thing forward. The one thing I would say on here that, you know, we can debate whether this is more fair or not, but a couple of points on here are just so lopsided towards one side. Like this last point on page three, that I would really make sure we comment on is, you know, basically, any one through four seeds is going to get a home game all the way through the final four. I mean, they don't do that in any, I mean, that's, that's absurd. I mean, in college, you would never do that. You're giving such an advantage to home team, and what it sounds like is the system is set up where we probably won't have many one, two, three, four seeds in the Western Mass, more than likely. Chances are, whatever way it falls out, whatever way you do it, but, you know, so you, you basically lose out on home-field advantage all the way through the final four, where then it's going to be held somewhere probably, you know, in Central Mass or wherever it ends up being. I mean, that, that's just absurd, this last bullet on here. I mean, the rest of it, I, I get what they're trying to do, I don't agree with it at all, I agree completely with what you're saying, but I mean, that last bullet is just so wrong.
But, but Jamie, we don't know, right? Like, my point is that MIA, if they actually cared, they would have rolled out, like, the last two years, if we had run this system, this is what it would have looked like.
True.
The last two years, Long Meadow would have been home in soccer for all the games up until the semifinals. Ludlow would have been home for all the-
But that's unfair. I mean, that's unfair, the teams are playing either. I agree with what you're saying, I completely get it, but you shouldn't get home-field advantage all the way through the playoffs.
Again, we can argue about whether that's right or not, but my point is, like, we don't know, and they should have told us, this is what it would have looked like the last two years, so you can make an informed decision-
It would be helpful.
About, like, were all of those games, other than soccer and lacrosse, going to happen in the Eastern Mass for every sport that we were in? We have no idea, because we don't, they didn't tell us that, right? It might not, we don't know.
So it's possible our student athletes would have to travel to the Cape, if that who, like, they-
Numerous times. I'll give you an example. Tomorrow night, our girls' hockey team is playing in Methuen. It's round one, it's prelim, that's a state tournament already, because there's so few team, girls' hockey teams in the state, there's only one, there's only one division in the state. I think that's telling of the future.
Right.
And if they win, then they'll come back home, and then three days from now, they'll go to another Eastern Mass.
Depending on, depending if, who you're playing in the seed, correct. We went down, Mike Cap, Tostos and I went down, we started two years ago, our first game was on a Tuesday night at Buzzers Bay High School. We came back, two days later, we went back, and we were in Eastern Mass, so yes.
It will stretch administrative coverage of these games as well.
It could do that as well, and, and it, and it, and for Long Meadow High School, our student athletes do well. Some schools don't have the challenges of admin coverage, but we often have our hockey team, you know, our hockey team's playing Thursday night. Originally, our girls' basketball was playing Thursday night. We had, so we, you're pulled in different directions, so.
So we have a, is there any other questions? We do have a letter here to the MIAA Board of Directors, it's a draft, it's pretty much signed by the school committee. Dr. O'Shea mentioned he was going to add a couple of things based on our conversation tonight. There's just a consensus as to, if we have to vote on this?
There's a, there's a recommended motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter expressing the position of the committee. So that would probably be the best way to go. I suppose it could be a consensus arrangement as well, so.
We might as well take a vote. Oh, Joanna, you want to add something?
If I have thoughts about the letter, is that would now be a good time, or is that, is it not even ready?
Well, if it's, if it's a, if it's a grammatical clarity thing, you and I maybe can talk offline, but if it's a, if it has some substantive change, then I think the committee ought to discuss that.
Probably, it's probably-
Substantive?
More content than, than grammar, yeah.
Okay, so it's probably worthy of-
Yeah, go ahead.
And it might not, and, and maybe I'm just overthinking it, but it's, it's, so it's a very respectful and appreciative letter of the MIAA. I don't know if it's strong enough in what we're trying to say, or maybe it's just, you know, that, that the, the transportation, the concern about the transportation cost comes before the concerns about the kids and, like, the academic stressors and the physical health and wellness stressors that even a simple extended bus ride is going to bring. Never mind, you know, the, the stressors about, you're not going to have Western Mass anymore, you know, that's a, that's a, more of an abstract, so.
You'd reverse paragraphs three and four?
Yeah, you know, like, and, and the demands of the family academics and athletics, you know, even if we could be a little more specific about that, especially with all that, you know, even if we could be a little more specific about that, especially with all that, you know, early starting schools later, you know, all that conversation about the overall health and wellness that's going to be impacted by something like this proposal.
Is everyone okay?
I, I, well, we, we, I agree, but we can't take too long because the votes are out, right? So when, how quickly can this be adjusted, or should we just do the swapping, swapping of the paragraphs to emphasize more of the impact on the kids more than the impact on the budget? Because that's what, that's what it is there, right? Joanna, that's where your time is?
Yeah, I just, I feel like it, to give it a little more oomph, because we're all, well, I'm hearing that most of us, or all of us are saying, you know, at least timing wise, we're not, it's not really the best, in the, in the best interest of our, of our students.
Yeah, I think we have to get this sent tomorrow.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, I agree that trying to come up with minimal changes so that we can all agree on it and get it out tomorrow. You know, I, I agree that changing the paragraphs makes sense, and Marty, I definitely want you to include the point about the, the lack of public input, or however you said it, I, I think that's critical to put that in there, because I, I think that's the most egregious problem right now.
I think that's just the second paragraph, right? We say we know that these issues have been studied fairly, but, you know, but maybe just add, however, there's been limited opportunity for the public to engage, you know, in conversation about this.
So I'm hearing do that and reverse the paragraph three and four? Is that?
Yep.
With the, you know, with the idea that expediency is-
Yes.
Trump's the fine tuning perhaps, yeah. We can, we'll, we'll get it out tomorrow. If, if Chairman Ray's not available to sign, we could have you sign on behalf of the committee.
Okay. There's a motion there on page four.
I move that the school committee authorize the chair to sign the letter expressing the committee's opposition to the MIA tournament proposal.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Lanners. We appreciate all that.
Thank you.
It's, it's a lot to, that was very helpful.
Thank you for moving me up in the order tonight. I am now off to my seventh grade son CYO playoff.
Oh, good luck.
So thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for going to the meeting on our behalf, Tom.
Tell Tom that we're going to discuss the NFL playoff format next week.
Yeah, perfect. It's probably easier to understand.
I think it might be, yes.
Do you think the MIA would like to change the way the divisions are set up because the Patriots have had too easy a time all these years since their division stinks?
Onto administrative reports.
So a few things. I wanted to mention that as an administrative team, we're very attentive to the, the developments that we're seeing with the coronavirus, and spoke today with our town manager and Chief John Dearborn, essentially is the emergency management coordinator for the town. They are in touch with Mass DPH, Local Board of Health, and they'll be meeting at some point over the next few days to discuss some emerging protocols for schools. So I just wanted to assure the committee, assure the community that we have our ears to the ground on that, and, and we'll talk later. We also have some field trips traveling internationally that comes up later in your agenda, so that this issue plays into that as well. The, I want to commend the, the community, the parents, students, our administrators at the, the middle school and the high school for coming together to begin to prep our eighth graders for their transition to ninth grade. So we have an eighth grade parents' night coming up on Thursday. Our middle school students were here at the high school today for an academic preview day, and yesterday, yesterday I think they had a chance to meet with representatives from Career Tech to learn about the offerings over at LPBEC. So a lot happening to get the wheels turning, to get the eighth graders ready for their ninth grade experience. Want to acknowledge that Friday is the last day of Police Chief John Stankowitz, and he's been a great partner to Long Meadow Public Schools. We're going to miss him greatly, and wanted to remind the committee, there is a reception for him on Friday from 12 to 1 o'clock, 11 to 12, thank you.
Wait, 11 minutes?
11 to 12. So if any committee member happens to, I know it's a tough time, but if you happen to be available, 11 to 12 o'clock at the police meeting room. So Chief John Stankowitz, last day, we're going to miss him greatly. District-wide concert next week, big undertaking, K-12 collaboration by our music educators and all our families that have children who are involved in the program, so looking forward to that at the high school. At your last meeting, we had mentioned that the Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Awards winners were going to be announced the next day. Thank you for reminding me of that. And so we're proud to announce that we had four individuals who identified as part of that recognition program. Mike Framrin, high school science, Suzanne Baker, high school math, Kelly Gallo is a beginning teacher at Glenn Brook in PE, and then Karen Locke is a special educator at the high school. So those four will be recognized at the Grin Spoon Awards Dinner in May, and we're really proud of their work, proud of what they represent for all our teachers. And then a plug for Minding Your Mind. It's an organization dedicated to helping communities address mental health and the stigma sometimes that comes with that. And so Minding Your Mind will be in the district on March 11th and 12th. We have two parent events and several student events where hopefully we can put the conversation on the table and kind of normalize conversations that relate to student mental health and well-being. So looking forward to those events. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Assistant superintendent reports?
All right, I'll go. Excuse the large font. I'm not sure what happened. I did it in Google Docs and then put it over to a Word document, and it's huge, so you don't need your glasses tonight because of the font. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the AG's partnership with our eighth graders in their civics class. I think the AG's office has been, has been here twice already. The last time they came and did a mock trial with our students, and they, they put somebody on trial, they actually used some real trial facts, and it was, it was really neat, the kids were really engaged, and the Attorney General, Galloway, actually, was he the prosecutor? No, he, yeah, he was the prosecutor, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
He didn't, he lost, so. I'll skip all the part about CADCA and the closed community and the students who went to Washington mostly. I just wanted to point out that there was a huge emphasis on the civic engagement piece of it, where they went to talk to legislature, legislator about, you know, what they felt was important, and that was a huge thing for them. They, they prepared and I can't say enough about the students in general and these students that went on the trip. And they were basically set free, you know, with about 2,500 other youth, and they were worried about getting home, back to the hotel to get their homework done. It's like, come on, let's, you know, go out to dinner and have some ice cream. Well, we really have to get our homework done, so that was their main, main concern in the evening, so really great students. Let's see, our middle school math and ELA teachers are visiting each other's classrooms so they can get a better idea of what teaching looks like at the different grade levels to work on alignment. They, they just finished a round of that last week, or week before last, I guess. We are working on our district curriculum accommodation plan revision. We've had input from lots of different groups, including our Curriculum Advisory Council, our parent group, and, and other places, and so I have a stack of edits about that big that we have to get done, but hope to have that done by the end of the school year as part of our national system of support. And we're starting to draft our Student Opportunities Act Plan, affectionately called Soap, yes, and that's in response to the massive amounts of funding that we got in excess of what we usually get from Chapter 70, right? So because we, we got less than 1.5 million incremental increase, we have to write a short plan. It's a three-year plan, and really, the gist of it is another kind of way to, to show some gap closing measures. So we're, we're looking at, starting to write that, and I think that does come before school committee for approval, right? So probably, maybe even at your next meeting, because I think April 1st?
Yes.
Is the deadline for that to go in? Specific, the commissioner's asking for short, concise, specific plans targeted two or three goals, so it shouldn't be a major undertaking, but just while it's coming your way.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mazza?
On Friday, Marty, George and I will be participating in a townwide emergency management training and exercise sponsored by the fire department, so we'll be reviewing roles and responsibilities and doing a tabletop exercise, believe on a regional ice storm and how various departments respond to that type of situation. An update on the high school science room, that has been offline since last spring. The room reopened on Monday. Finally, over vacation, we were able to get some of the millwork installed and final cleanup done during January, so the, the room is now back in service for science. It's been, high school's been very patient through the process, why the work has been done. We had to order specific to, they're made specific to this building, the science station, so it took longer than we initially expected. The bathrooms at the high school have been an issue, as you might have heard over the last few months. There have been numerous backups, so during February vacation, they brought a company in to jet the line and run a camera down to see if there's any glaring defects. Nothing showed up specific that was alarming, but they were sending it out to have a third-party engineer look at it to provide some feedback. We've also implemented some evening protocol to help kind of flush the line, to make sure all the debris is pushed out all the way to Williams Street to hopefully prevent the issue from continuing to happen. It's most certainly seems to have been occurring on a more frequent basis than what we would anticipate, so it's been about three or four times over the last, maybe two months, just in the academic way. The custodians continue to do their cleaning daily and evening cleaning, especially around common surfaces that are touched frequently, not only for flu, but any kind of bacterial and virus germs, so that there's no sharing going on. So we continue to encourage them to make sure that's happening on a regular basis. Next week, there'll be, again, some administrators being, participating in a demo of a software for reunification purposes. It's a tool to help districts in the event that we would ever have to implement a reunification site to help the process run a little smoother than a paper process, so we'll be working with the police and fire department on looking at this as, if it's a possible tool that we'd want to implement. And lastly, the food service advisory committee will be meeting on Thursday, March 12th, at 11:30 at Williams, if anybody's interested in participating.
Great, thank you. There is a school committee chair report this evening. Armin, do you have a student report for us?
I don't, but I'll have an update on the parking lot situation as soon as the safety committee gets back to us.
Okay, great.
So next meeting, I should have an update.
Okay, thank you. LPBEC update, as Dr. O'Shea mentioned, they visited, I believe, the eighth grade and ninth grade students to give them an overview of the programs that are offered over there. Ryan and I both have a meeting there tomorrow night, so we'll have more to offer at our next meeting.
Loads of information, no doubt.
Exactly. Kevin, is there anything on the energy and sustainability committee?
Yeah, the only thing that came up that was relevant to our committee is that they're moving forward with renovations at Williams, and so Tom is going to help try and make that happen for us, so, so that's the, the recent update. And again, as we talked previously, a bunch of the schools are on the agenda, but for right now, Williams is the focus.
Thank you. Jamie, is there an open space? Okay. Finance Subcommittee?
So we do have, on the agenda tonight is consent agenda, which there are two building use requests that Finance Sub did recommend, so I don't know if you want me to review them, or consent agenda doesn't usually entail a discussion, but I'm-
I thought that was the whole point of that consent agenda.
Happy to briefly explain that.
Don't go on, don't go on.
I, I'm waiting for the chair to, would you like me to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, they all, they all are included, yes.
So we need to take them off, no?
No, on the building use requests, everything's included.
Okay.
The two, yes.
Yes.
There are two building use requests.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee. The school committee approved the February 25th, 2020 consent agenda as presented.
Second, thank you. Discussion?
There's no discussion on consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. All of them? Thanks.
I believe Finance Sub met prior to tonight's meeting, and so I think with the other items on the school committee agenda, the school, Finance Sub provided some feedback for administration to go back and look at some things and bring some information back to Finance Sub, I think, before we're ready to take action on any of the fees and/or Medco and Choice slots for the 2021 school year. So they gave us some direction that we'll work on and hopefully have potentially some recommendation to bring forward to school committee at a meeting in March. They're all tabled.
Policy Sub didn't have an opportunity to meet, they were going to meet today, but there was a Finance Subcommittee meeting, so that had to be postponed. Is there a Curriculum Sub update?
Can I just note that we do have a policy, a date for a Policy Subcommittee meeting?
March 10.
March 10, and it's a full agenda.
It is.
Yes. Sorry.
Great, okay, and then Eval Subcommittee?
We have not met since our last meeting, however, the artifact from our last meeting is in your packet for information as advertised last time.
Thank you. Ongoing business, we don't have anything. Under new business, we have a couple items about preliminary overnight field trip requests and then overnight field trip requests. I know Dr. O'Shea wanted to talk about a couple of those. I don't know if we wanted to move forward with the preliminary?
The, the overnight, so let me, let me just back up. So as you know, school committee provides initial approval to foreign travel at least one year in advance to allow the advisors to make accommodations and book travel arrangements. And then final approval must be issued within 30 days of a trip leaving. So we have a trip heading to Italy in April and then a trip heading to France. It's Italy and Greece in April, and then another trip going to France. And they, with the developments in Europe relating to the coronavirus, we thought it would be best to ask you to table your consideration of those foreign trips. I think that we'll have enough time to take another look at it at your first meeting in March. We'll have a better idea of the path of the coronavirus and whether or not it makes sense to sponsor that trip, those two trips. I think the, the outbreak in Italy over the last week or so has been cause for concern. I think we need to gather some additional information. We'll pay attention to State Department advisories, we'll watch what's happening from the CDC, and then we can bring that information to you, so you can make an informed decision on that. But I think it would make sense on those foreign trips to postpone your consideration until, until March, so, if that's okay. There are some other, over, there are some other field trip requests for April of 2021 and some local trips that can be considered.
Okay, so we'll move to the preliminary overnight field trip requests? There's two for your consideration?
I move that the school committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Scotland and Ireland in April 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I move that the school committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Japan in April of 2021.
Second.
All those in favor? Discussion? Discussion either?
Those look like amazing trips. Hope they have fun.
All those in favor? Thank you, Ryan. And as Dr. O'Shea said, the other two, or, three, they're- Okay, go ahead.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approved the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to New York City, New York, June 12th through 13th, 2020.
Well, I mean, that's, that's for your consideration, you know, I think the, we haven't seen any specific concern in that area, in the New York City area, but certainly any travel nowadays probably has to be considered with caution, so it's up to, up to the committee. I would recommend that that trip go on as planned, but it obviously needs final approval from the school committee.
Are we in discussion? Are we seconded?
Oh, second?
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, discussion?
I just, we, we would always have the opportunity to revisit, I would assume, any vote in, just based on CDC warnings that have come out today.
Yes.
Okay. And updates that-
Well said, yeah, that's a great- Well said, yeah. That's a great point. And this is not going until June, so.
Right.
Plenty of time to reconsider it if need be.
Okay.
Okay, great. All of us in favor? There's no executive session this evening?
I move that the school committee adjourn the February 25th, 2020 school committee meeting.
Second. All of us in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone tuning in at home.
I went to the writing show instead of watching.